Welcome to the 2025 Camp Verde State of the Town Meeting hosted by the town of Camp Verde. Now here's the State of the Town Meeting live at the Philip England Center.
Live State of the Town for beautiful Camp Verde, Arizona. If everyone would please stand and remove cover and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Tonight is a milestone for us because this is Camp Verde's first ever State of the Town. It is an opportunity for all of us to gather in one place and hear directly from those shaping our future and sharing the pride we feel for our hometown. It is my privilege to stand here tonight surrounded by lifelong residents, new neighbors, business owners, community leaders, and all who care about the future of our town. Whether you've been here for generations or just arrived, you are a part of the people who power Camp Verde. And as the river has long guided us, it is our shared duty to protect it. For ourselves, for those who come after us, and for the life that it gives this place we call home. The State of the Town is not just about numbers and checking boxes. It's about telling the story of our community, where we've been, where we are, and where we're going. It's about recognizing the work that we've accomplished together and setting our sights on the opportunities ahead. And it's about doing all of that while honoring our past and the land that we are so fortunate to call home. It's all good. Before we get started tonight, you're gonna get to clap in just a second. Before we get started tonight, I want to take a moment to thank a very important partner to our community. And that is APS and Darla DeVille. Could they both stand for me, please? I think Frank and Darla are here. APS has been a steady supporter of Camp Verde, not just in utility services, but in community investment. Darla and her team go above and beyond to stay connected with the people they serve. And their support makes events like this possible. In fact, tonight, thanks to APS, you will find printed copies of the annual report available to you to take home. I encourage you to look through it. It's a snapshot of the work that we've done over the past year and a roadmap for where we're headed. Darla, APS, thank you for your continued partnership with Camp Verde. So our next part, we are waiting, and she's gonna be here any moment. She's on her way, she got hung up, but we're just waiting on our next speaker. So if you'll just grant me just a slight bit of patience, I believe that she'll be here any moment. So I'm just gonna take a very, very short hiatus and then I'll be right back. All right, we're gonna be nimble and change things up a little bit. It is my privilege to introduce someone whose dedication to Camp Verde runs deep. Supervisor Dee Jenkins has served this community for many years. First, as a town council member, then as the mayor of Camp Verde, and now as our representative at the county level. She knows our community inside and out, understands our needs, and works tirelessly to ensure that our voices are heard. In April of this year, Dee was swiftly appointed to the role of county supervisor. That transition happened very quickly, and while it is customary for our council to recognize and honor a mayor when they leave office, the timing of that changeover meant we didn't have the opportunity to do so. Tonight, we are grateful to have a chance to properly thank her. Her leadership has touched nearly every part of our town, from infrastructure improvements to economic development. And she continues to be a strong advocate for the Verde Valley as a whole. Before she begins her update, we would like to take a moment to recognize her years of service and the lasting contributions that she has made to our town. On behalf of the town of Camp Verde, if you'll come up here, ma'am. It is my honor to present Supervisor Dee Jenkins with a gift as a token of our appreciation for her dedication, leadership, and ongoing commitment to our community. So please join me in welcoming Supervisor Dee Jenkins.
I'm a little shorter than you. Just like that? That was really unexpected, but thank you all very much. Thank you to Mayor Moore for the introduction and to the town of Camp Verde for the invitation to speak as your District Two Yavapai County Supervisor at Camp Verde's first State of the Town event. You may be thinking, the town of Camp Verde is an incorporated municipality. What does the county do for a town other than oversee elections and issue septic permits? I'll get to that shortly, but first I'd like to recognize my fellow supervisors. Some of them, I can't see who's in the audience, sorry, it all looks really dark out there. But I'd like to recognize the Board of Supervisors for the Yavapai County. Chair Mary Mallory represents District Five. Vice Chair Brooks Compton representing District One. And Supervisors Nikki Check, District Three, and Supervisor Chris Kuknio representing District Four. I know Nikki's here, I'm not sure if others are here, but thank you Nikki. Thank you for coming. Onto District Two updates. District Two is a very vast district in area. District Two includes my home, the town of Camp Verde, and the communities of Cornville, Page Springs, Beaver Creek, Rimrock, Maguireville, Lake Monizuma, and Cherry, part of Prescott Valley with Stoneridge, Quailwood, and Prescott Country Club. I also represent the town of Dewey-Humboldt, Cortes Lakes, Mayor's Spring Valley, and I-17 South to Bumblebee, Cleeter, Crown King, and Black Canyon City. So if I put any miles on my car, try 6,500 in four months. And it's been my pleasure, by the way, I've enjoyed every minute of it. District Two is a diverse district from the fertile Verde Valley, home to ranching and farming, to areas that are rich with friendly communities and still others that face challenges with water resources. It has been personally so interesting and enjoyable to visit and meet the people in my district. And it's always an honor for me to serve everyone in my district and my town. Onto department updates for the town of Camp Verde. Even though the proposed health center for Camp Verde has been delayed due to funding issues, I assure you the project remains a priority. The clinic will provide much-needed medical services for Camp Verde and surrounding areas. The clinic will be available to all folks regardless of their ability to pay and will provide medical services that you currently travel to other communities to receive, such as childhood immunizations and other pediatric care. Community Health Services Director Leslie Horton, Camp Verde, and I are committed to seeing this project through to completion so that basic medical care is available locally, right here in Camp Verde, sooner rather than later. While the town and county have their own jurisdictional authority for development services and public works, the partnerships are worth, are important as we update our planning and zone codes, adoption of international building codes, and programs such as Growing Water Smart. A combined effort to work together on water-related issues and establishing the framework for future conservation and protection of water resources benefits us all. The Camp Verde Transfer Station is one of the busiest in the entire county. Last fiscal year, the station processed 1,123 tons of trash, wrote 14,501 customer receipts, and this will astound you, 32,929 tires were collected. Camp Verde Community Cleanup Events processed 432 tons of trash over a three-week period. The Free Slash Program brought in 1,541 tons of green waste. The Free Slash Program is very important, and everyone is encouraged to take advantage of the program to clean up and make your home firewise. The town of Camp Verde has an intergovernmental agreement with the county to provide flood control support and floodplain management. In the coming year, $260,000 is available for Camp Verde flood control projects. The county also manages the Community Rating System program, where communities receive points for exceeding the National Flood Insurance Program standards. The result is a 10% savings on flood insurance premiums for homeowners in Camp Verde. This project has been, excuse me, upcoming is a grant-funded drainage study on Salt Mine Road. This project has been expanded to include areas of interest for the town. The goal is to identify drainage issues, recommend solutions, and ultimately complete a construction project that addresses the chronic flooding issues on Salt Mine Road. One of my favorite places to visit is the library. The Camp Verde Library is an integral part of the community. The libraries of today are far more than a place to check out a book to read. They provide cultural, educational, technological, and social services. The Camp Verde Library does a fantastic job reaching out to all generations and embracing today's challenges to offer diverse programs and interesting events. The county helps support these programs through direct funding of an annual contribution. This year, the amount is $63,748, a slight increase over last year. It is my hope and my goal to continue this trend for increased funding and recognition of the significant role libraries play in each of our communities. In addition to funding, the county has available online subscription services such as Ancestry, Britannica, Chiltons, Gale, Novelis, Mango Languages, and many more. Visit the library, check out these additional services, and happy reading. I'll finish up with general county updates. Upcoming for the Board of Supervisors is the creation of our first strategic plan. The county is also deep into a facilities master plan and a much-needed comprehensive planning and zoning code update to update our current codes dating back to 1968. Mark your calendars for the county's first State of the County event at Finlay Toyota Center. It's in Prescott Valley, and it's on Tuesday, September 16th, starting at 10:00 a.m., with presentations at 11:30. And finally, thank you to the town of Camp Verde for hosting this event, inviting me to speak, and the opportunity for us to collaborate, build connections, and strengthen partnerships that enable us to do a better job and serve our respective communities. A special thank you to all the speakers, organizers, and most important, the attendees, who took the time out of their busy schedule to learn about all the great accomplishments of and the future plans for the town of Camp Verde. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Jenkins for that update and for all that you continue to do for Camp Verde and the Verde Valley. We appreciate your years of dedication and your continued partnership with our community. Our next speaker has been a steadfast leader for the Yavapai Apache Nation and a strong partner with the town of Camp Verde. Chairwoman Tanya Lewis has served with dedication and heart, building bridges between our communities and advocating for her people and working to protect the heritage we all share. She has guided important initiatives from cultural preservation to economic development, always with an eye toward what will strengthen the future. This year marks a transition. Chairwoman Lewis is terming out of her role, and the election for the Yavapai Apache Nation leadership will soon be underway. Tonight, before she begins, we want to take a moment to thank her for her service, not only to the Yavapai Apache Nation, but to the entire Verde Valley community. Chairwoman Lewis, if you would come up. On behalf of the town of Camp Verde, it is my honor to present you with this gift as a small token of gratitude for your leadership, your partnership, and the lasting impact that you've made on this community that we share. Thank you. Yes, absolutely, please. I'm gonna hand the mic back over to Supervisor Jenkins really quick, and then we'll give it over to Chairwoman Lewis.
Tanya? As I would say on occasion as a past mayor of the town of Camp Verde, a moment of personal privilege, please, so that I may express my deep respect and gratitude to outgoing Yavapai Apache Chairwoman, Tanya Lewis. Her intelligence, leadership, and tenacity led the way for countless accomplishments that will improve and enhance the lives of Yavapai Apache Nation and is nothing short of amazing. I wish my friend, Tanya, much happiness as she begins the next chapter of her life.
Wow, I wasn't expecting that. Because I am going to be speaking about the lands of Camp Verde relating to my tribe, the Yavapai Apache People, I was taught culturally that I'm going to introduce myself in my language, which is the Apache language. Good evening, everyone. My name is Tanya Lewis, I'm the chairwoman for the Yavapai Apache Nation. I'm the daughter of the late Ethel and Lyman Lewis of Clarkdale, and I am of the Standing Walnut Clan. In our culture, we follow our mother's roots, and I'm deep-rooted here in the Verde Valley, which the Standing Walnut Clan is where we are. We are deep-rooted. On my father's side, I come from the Seven Mile District, from the St. Carlos Apache Tribe. My father was born and raised in Fossil Creek. If you ever visit Fossil Creek, I'm pretty confident that all of us have. It's a very special place for our people. And in particular, just to share a little bit about me is that on the map for Fossil Creek, and it says Dixon Lewis's place, that's my grandfather. My grandfather put all the APS lines that are in Fossil Creek. My grandfather did that until he retired, and then we moved up into the Verde Valley where my father met my mother, in Cottonwood. So that is who I am, and it is definitely an honor to be here, to be participating in the State of the Town. Thank you Mayor Moore and council members, I appreciate that for this opportunity. So what I'm going to share, I'll just be very brief, is to share the history of the lands within the Verde Valley, not just Camp Verde. So the Yavapai Apache Nation, we are Yavapai, which is people of the sun, Yavapai, and we are Dalgae, which are the Apache people, which means hunters. And our original, Aboriginal lands is 16,000 square miles in this great state of Arizona. So you can only imagine how many we originally roamed freely in this great state of Arizona. In 1871 to 1875, by President Ulysses Grant, we were established as the Camp Verde Reservation, which is here locally in the Verde Valley. We've always been in the Verde Valley since time immemorial, which that was 900 square miles. So we were 10 miles east and west of the Verde River. As we all know, in here, the Verde River runs right through our homelands. Our current reservation to date, oh, I'll share this just also, is that in 1875, the president eliminated our reservation, which we were forced to remove. We are survivors of military removalment here from Camp Verde, which we were forced to remove by the military, and we were moved 200 miles southeast, which is the St. Carlos Apache Reservation, is where we were held prisoners of war for over 20 years. History shows that we had one person that is from here in the area. Every day for 25 years, he asked for us to come home. Every day, he was told no until year 25. They turned a blind eye, and here we are. Today, I think about that every day, I am here because of the resiliency of those who were before me. My family, my ancestors, that's why I'm here today, to be able to have my family here. So when we came home, we had our first allotment, and I'll always remember this because I spent some time in the National Archives in Washington, DC to learn more about the history of my people. And the days I spent there with our late archaeologist, his name is Chris Coder, I love him, and he's been with us since 1997, and we lost him this past February. He's been amazing, he's seen me grow up as a teenager, he's seen my children grow up. So we've had a really close relationship, and I spent that time with him. Back then, we were, as our leader, he is Chief Beecher. He went to Washington, DC, and went to the Bureau of Indian Affairs and begged and pleaded for allotment because when we came back home, we came back home to nothing. So what we did, our original reservation started in Lower Camp Verde, which you see the Ernie's Gas Station that is there, that little section, and there's a little piece of the farm line and the river's right behind it. That is where we originally started, and then that's what we had to start. So all the way up into today, and even I know going in the future, our future leadership, we will continue to buy back land, we will continue to work with our communities because we are good stewards to the land, and I feel we are also good neighbors to the people that we live among. So as we did that, we have slowly, every piece of land the nation has, we've had to buy back. So every leadership before me, we have always had the goal to buy back lands, and that is actually in our constitution for the Yavapai Apache Nation, that is in our preamble, to get back land, to build our land base back up. Because just like in any other community, our people continue to grow, our families continue to grow, and we always want to come home. And it doesn't matter where we are in the world, we all know where our heart is, and we all know where our home is. So today, we are at 2.86 square miles, which is 18, just over 1,800 acres is our reservation today. So we started at 16,000 square miles down to 2.86 square miles. That is my people, and that is who have me here today. And we work really hard. I've supported everybody, whether that leader is still with us or not. I've always respected their vision and carried it through. If there's something I could do, and that I was taught, even when I sat in a room with them, it's always very important, and I've always respected those decisions that have been made. So right now, we worked with the town of Camp Verde. We worked with the Forest Service, which we did a land exchange. We signed our land exchange in November of last year. And today, that will take our reservation lands, we took 3,200 acres, we switched, swapped, exchanged with the Forest Service, and that will take our reservation up to 7.65 square miles. So within that time, and this has been a land exchange that has been worked on for over 30 years. And it was a very humbling experience to see that happen in November of 2024, which benefits everybody, especially here in the town of Camp Verde. We have a great partnership, we have an IGA with the town of Camp Verde. That then it was Mayor Jenkins, and now Supervisor Jenkins, we work closely together. We worked with the council as well, and it's beneficial for all of us. That's when I say we are good stewards and we are good neighbors because we're willing to work with our neighbors, because we're here together. We're here to make our town, our county, and our state the best place to be. So we have actually the, we have 40, just like, just about under 4,900 acres that is pending in BIA, so which that lands will go into trust, which will make it official reservation land. And that's very exciting to be able to carry out a dream of the Yavapai Apache People, and I know that our leadership going forward, that they'll continue to do and lead by those examples. And it's very humbling to sit with my Uncle David Quail, who is a council member. My Uncle David Quail bought the first piece of fee land. My Uncle David Quail is the one who saw this vision. And now my Uncle David Quail sits on council with me. And it's truly full circle to see that, that he once too sat as a chairman. And I was, used to be a council member, and he was my chairman then. So I really appreciate this opportunity. Thank you for everything, thank you to the town of Camp Verde, thank you Mayor Moore, thank you to Supervisor Jenkins, and for everybody here. It's been a great experience. I love the town of Camp Verde, although I was born and raised in Clarkdale, that will always be my home as well. But I'm rooted here with my family. I raised my children here, started my family here, and it's been great. And I enjoy every part of this, and I wish nothing but the best, and I know great things are yet to come for all of us in the town of Camp Verde. So I'm just gonna leave you with this. Thank you.
Thank you Chairwoman Lewis for your heartfelt words and for everything that you've done to honor history, culture, and spirit of Camp Verde. Your leadership has left a lasting impact, and your commitment to building bridges between the Yavapai Apache Nation and our town will continue to benefit our community for years to come. Thank you.
Hang on, I gotta find my place. All right, I'm gonna kick off the town council updates by sharing one of the most important initiatives that we have underway right now, something that will help guide Camp Verde's future for the next couple of decades, and that is our general plan. Think of the general plan as our community roadmap, the guide for how we grow, how we develop, and protect what makes us unique over the next 10 to 20 years. Our community development team is leading this work in-house with the help of our technical advisory group, a dedicated mix of residents and stakeholders who care deeply about our future. Together, they're taking it one element at a time, tackling housing, land use, roads in circulation, open space, economic development, water resources, and more. They've even put together detailed character area maps that highlight the special features, priorities, and opportunities in different parts of the town. What I love about the process that we're doing is it's not just about growth, it's about thoughtful, intentional planning that reflects who we are, our rural heritage, our natural landscapes, our agricultural roots, and that strong sense of community that sets Camp Verde apart. And the work doesn't stop once the general plan is adopted. That's actually just the beginning. The next step will be a complete comprehensive update to our zoning code. You heard Supervisor Jenkins mention that the county zoning code is a little bit old, and Camp Verde is as well, and it needs to be updated. So our develop, and we're updating our zoning code. So we're updating our zoning codes so our development rules line up with the vision and goals in the plan. That way, we can guide new development in a way that protects the character of our neighborhoods and supports the kind of community we want now and for generations to come. This isn't just policy talk, it's about making sure that as Camp Verdi grows, we're doing it with clarity, consistency, and purpose. We want our residents, our developers, our decision-makers, all working from the same page, with a shared vision rooted in local values and local voices. We'll be sharing a full draft of the general plan with the community soon. In the meantime, you can see individual draft chapters right now on the town's website, and I encourage everyone to take a look, share your thoughts with us, and be a part of shaping the future of Camp Verdi. So those are just some highlights of the general plan. Those are highlights from the general plan zoning update process. Work that will help ensure Camp Verdi grows in a way that stays true to our values while planning the future. Now, you'll hear from the rest of our town council, each sharing updates on key areas the town has been working on. Councilor Foreman will cover housing, Councilor Bolton, capital improvement and infrastructure projects, Councilor Sebold, water resiliency, Councilor Godwin, parks and recreation and open spaces, Vice Mayor Staudier, tourism and economic development, and Councilor Murdock, community engagement efforts. Council, before yours.
I'm not well-known for my public speaking skills, so I'll try to make this as painless as possible. It's a privilege to speak with you about one of the most important issues facing Camp Verdi housing, because when we talk about housing, we're not just talking about buildings, we're talking about people, about families, about opportunity, and ultimately about the future of our community. A healthy, thriving Camp Verdi means having a variety of housing options for seniors who want to age in place, for young families just starting out, for workers who want to live where they work, and for everyone in between. Housing is the foundation that supports nearly every other part of our community life. It impacts our ability to attract and keep a strong workforce, it shapes the success of our local businesses, and it influences the strength of our schools, services, and sense of belonging. We hear this consistently from our business community, one of the biggest barriers to hiring today is the lack of affordable and available housing. And when the people who work here can also live here, the whole community benefits. We see less commuting, more civic engagement, and stronger local connections. Camp Verdi has made housing, especially workforce housing, a longstanding priority. We haven't just acknowledged the issue, we've taken meaningful steps to address it. In March of twenty twenty-two, the town issued a request for proposals aimed at delivering affordable workforce housing. The goal was clear, increase the number of quality attainable rental units for our residents and workforce. That effort resulted in the Sycamore Vista Project, which is now under construction. Sycamore Vista represents a major win for Camp Verdi. The developers successfully secured two low-income housing tax credit awards, an incredibly competitive and impactful financing tool. Once complete, the development will deliver more than three hundred new housing units, with half designated as income-restricted, to ensure they remain affordable for our local workforce and families. We expect residents to begin moving in later this year. We also want to acknowledge the broader momentum underway in Camp Verdi. Since twenty nineteen, we've seen a six hundred and sixty percent increase in dwelling unit applications. This surge began in twenty twenty and continued into twenty twenty-four, demonstrating a growing interest and investment in Camp Verdi's future. And we're not slowing down. Based on current planning applications, we anticipate an additional six hundred and ninety-two housing units to be permitted in the near future. When combined with projects already under development, we're looking at over twelve hundred new homes coming online in just the next couple of years. This growth presents both opportunity and responsibility. It's an opportunity to expand affordable and attainable housing choices for all our residents, families, young professionals, and seniors alike. But it also requires us to invest in the critical infrastructure that supports housing, roads, water, sewer, and public services to ensure that our growth is sustainable and thoughtfully placed within Camp Verdi's distinct character areas. That's why we're investing in tools like the new Community Development Project Dashboard, which gives residents insight into where and how growth is happening. Transparency remains a core value of this town, and this dashboard is just one example that reflects our commitment to informed collaborative planning. As we look ahead, we remain grounded in a simple but powerful truth: Housing is foundational to the kind of community we want to be, welcoming, balanced, and resilient. Everything we do aligns with Camp Verdi's value, community, stewardship, in honoring both our roots and our future. That means planning wisely, investing responsibly, and most importantly, putting people first. Camp Verdi is committed to building a community where people can live, work, and stay, a place where families can put down roots, where businesses have the talent they need to thrive, and where people of all ages can find a place to call home. Thank you to the Camp Verdi community, our dedicated town staff, and to everyone attending this evening's event. Your support, engagement, and shared vision are what makes this community strong. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here and giving me the opportunity to practice my public speaking. I'm here to provide you with information and updates on capital improvement projects happening within our community. These efforts will serve our residents and visitors for many years to come. Let's begin with the sports complex. The concession stand and the bathrooms, we've received a geotechnical report and have started footings. And once that is complete and they set the building, the ADA walkways will be put in. New concrete slabs and curbs will be put in around it. The force main and the irrigation installation are also on track for the ball field. There's just a few parts left to connect the existing headwork to the irrigation system. The work will include completing the foundation for the slab for the pump building. Once the irrigation system has been finished, we will begin planting trees in the location chosen for their long-term benefit to the complex. Our contractors have also been busy cleaning out the existing conduits and installing wiring for the sports complex service. This will ensure reliable service now and allow future installation of fifty amp outlets. Along with that, the parking lot lights and the sidewalk lights are nearly complete, they should be complete by the end of the week. Moving on to roadway projects, the Finney Flat-Monizuma Castle Highway improvements are progressing. We expect to receive sixty percent of the design plans by the end of this month. Along with Finney Flats and Park Verdi, the water main replacement is in progress, with ninety percent of the design completed or underway. I'm pleased to report that the street striping has been completed, and apparently, we striped more streets than we planned. We also have the sidewalk and crossing improvements underway, the Verdi Lakes Drive sidewalk and the Monizuma Castle Highway multim medio, multimodio, whatever that word is, Dickinson Circle, multimodo. You know, I've said that at home about four hundred times, and when I get up here, I can't do it. Improvements are currently being designed and handled in-house. As for water and drainage and retention ponds, which always draws a lot of interest for some reason, the drainage project at the Dickinson Circle, the water line has been complete, and if any of you have driven down two sixty, you'll see that all the culverts are there and they're ready to go. The town maintenance yard finished their project, which was the retention pond, and everything is ready to go there. In our community spaces, in the community center park rain catchment project is preparing for its next phase, which will help irrigate future trees along the east fence line. Joshua Tree Landscaping is designing a new irrigation system for our community park. As for the Heritage Pool renovation, we have gathered public input and have initiated talks with the Camp Verdi School District about long-term partnerships. Our recent completed and ongoing infrastructure projects include the Main Street reconstruction, which has passed its final comment phase, is now being finalized, and we've completed the court addition. Looking ahead, planning is underway for the fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Upcoming priorities include pavement preservation in the Verdi Lakes area and the procurement of new contractors for our JOC contractors. These projects, both big and small, are investments in the future of our community. Together, they will improve safety, accessibility, and quality for the life of everyone who calls our town home. Thank you.
I'm here to give you a brief update on the town of Camp Verdi's municipal water system and what we're doing to ensure water resiliency for today and for our future. In May of two thousand twenty-two, the town officially acquired the private Camp Verdi Water Company. Since then, we've grown to serve over two thousand one hundred customers, covering the majority of our community. Each year, we pump more than two hundred and fifty million gallons of water, enough to fill two hundred and seventy-eight Olympic-sized swimming pools. And most importantly, we test our water regularly, and I'm proud to say, we consistently meet or exceed state and federal drinking water standards. Our system includes three active wells, over sixty miles of water line, and six storage tanks that hold more than five point five million gallons of water. But maintaining a strong water system takes more than operation, it takes investment. That's why the town is actively upgrading our infrastructure. We're replacing aging meters to improve accuracy and helping residents detect leaks early. We're also inventorying all service lines to comply with new EPA rules to eliminate any lead components in our system. Natural arsenic levels in some of our wells seem to peak during peak season, so we've secured grant funding to construct new treatment facilities that will keep our water safe going forward. We're also adding a new one million dollar storage tank near the Camp Verdi Commercial District area to improve fire protection and system pressure for key commercial zones. New well projects are underway, including a replacement well at Mongini off two sixty West by Jones Ford, and new sources at Highview on two sixty West near Bradshaw Haven Development. These are critical as our community grows and our water demands increase. And we're not stopping there. We're upgrading old water mains, expanding fire hydrant coverage, and planning for long-term conservation and recharge projects, including wastewater reuse and storm water capture. In short, we're building a system that's more resilient, more efficient, and ready to meet the needs of Camp Verdi for generations to come.
Thank you all for joining us tonight. It's always a privilege to speak about something that touches so many lives in Camp Verdi. Quality of life isn't just a phrase, it's a promise the town of Camp Verdi works hard to fulfill. Our Parks and Recreation Team manages eleven public parks across Camp Verdi, including two major destinations, Butler Park and the Camp Verdi Sports Complex. The Sports Complex in particular stands out as one of the most significant investments in our recreation history. Thanks to good planning, grant support, council commitment, Phase One of the project will be completed by the end of this year. It will include, yes, yes, yes. It will include full infrastructure installation, two baseball-soccer fields, two football-s... I mean, I'm sorry, two baseball-s softball fields, and two football-soccer fields, a new parking lot, a concession, and a restroom building, and field lighting to ensure visibility and safety. In the past year alone, the impact has been significant, with the Sports Complex welcoming over one hundred and twenty-three thousand visitors, while Butler Park drew over fifty-one thousand. These numbers confirm that spaces like this matter. Programs like grasshopper basketball continue to thrive. Our summer day camp remains one of the most popular programs we offer. For adults, we have expanded leagues like softball and basketball, and this fall, we are excited to launch a new adult coed kickball league. We are partners with local instructors to provide classes in yoga, Pilates, and aqua aerobics, ensuring there's something for everyone to enjoy. Our indoor and other facilities are heavily used by the community, which the numbers show. Our commissary kitchen had one hundred and fifty-two uses last year. Meeting rooms two oh four and two oh five had eight hundred and thirty bookings. The community center gym had over six hundred uses. Our Heritage Pool had over eight thousand visitors. Our public showers have served more than eight hundred individuals. We have also made great strides in developing and improving key trailheads, including Rial Canyon Trailhead, Box T Trailhead, and Grief Hill Trailhead. Of course, one of the most visible aspects of our work is the hosting of community events. Our signature events include Touch a Truck, the Common Wine Festival, Corn Fest, Fort Verdi Days, Trunk and Treat on Main Street, and Christmas Magic on Main. Each of these events brings thousands of people to our community, helping strengthen local pride, support our small businesses, and create lifelong memories for residents and visitors alike. Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight and for caring about the future of Camp Verdi. I want to take a few minutes to talk about where we're headed when it... I want to take a few minutes to talk about where we're headed when it comes to economic and tourism development, and why those efforts matter so much to the long-term prosperity of our community. A healthy, thriving town isn't just about roads and buildings, it's about having a strong and resilient local economy. That means creating the right mix of business, retail, and tourism that not only create jobs and services for residents, but also generate the local sales tax revenue that helps fund the things we all value. Here in Camp Verde, nearly 50% of our general plan, I'm sorry, of our general fund, comes from sales tax. So when we talk about economic and tourism development, what we're really talking about is reinvesting in our quality of life, providing public safety, fixing roads, upgrading water and sewer systems, offering programs at the library, and building amenities like parks and trails. And all of these support both residents and visitors. We're not chasing growth for the sake of it, we're focused on the right kind of growth, growth that aligns with Camp Verde's values and vision, and that builds a financially sustainable future. That's why our strategic plan calls for a resilient and diversified economy, one that helps Camp Verde grow, adapt, and thrive. And one of our biggest tools to get there is tourism. Camp Verde is both a destination and a base camp for adventure. Tourism is one of our strongest economic engines. Visitors bring dollars into our community by staying overnight, shopping locally, and dining in our restaurants, and enjoying our parks, wineries, and events. That's money going directly into our community. We're building on that momentum. We recently developed a new tourism marketing plan and launched the Tourism Working Engagement Group. This group is made up of local voices that will help guide our efforts, and soon, we will be amplifying our story through media, marketing, and social outreach. We're also focused on retail attraction, because the more we shop and dine locally, the more we reinvest in our town. We brought in Retail Coach, a national firm to help us attract restaurants, lodging, and services we know our restaurants and visitors want. And it's working. Our staff is seeing interest from developers ready to invest in Camp Verde. At the same time, we're investing in our own backyard. Our local businesses are the heart of Camp Verde, and we're proud to support them through the BRIC, our Business Resource and Innovation Center. It's a one-stop shop offering training and support to local businesses. Last year alone, the BRIC hosted over 25 classes and events. In closing, I'll say this: economic and tourism development isn't about changing who we are, it's about strengthening what we have. We're investing in what matters, staying true to our roots, and creating opportunities for future generations. Thank you for your time, your support, and your commitment to Camp Verde.
Friends, family, and literally my neighbors, welcome tonight. Look at our community engagement. Thank you so much to our town manager and our town clerk for putting this together. This is absolutely amazing, and I'm, first time I've done this in about 12 years, so thank you all for being here. At the heart of everything we do as a town is our commitment to engage in the community in meaningful, transparent, and accessible ways. Over the past year, we've taken major steps to strengthen that connection and ensure our residents feel heard, informed, and empowered. One of our most exciting accomplishments was launching the Camp Verde's first-ever Citizen Academy. This program gave residents a behind-the-scenes look at how local government works. It built understanding, strengthened relationships, and showed the dedication our staff brings to the community every single day. I'm happy to share that we'll be offering another Citizen Academy this fall. Please be look on the lookout for updates on that, and we hope even more residents will take part. We've also conducted a national community survey, which gave us valuable feedback on what we're doing well and where we can improve. But before the end of the year, we'll be releasing a new survey to measure our progress, to see how we're doing. This continued dialogue helps us stay responsive to the evolving needs and expectations of our residents. To support the transparency and keep community informed, our town manager, Ms. Miranda Fisher, has launched the Town Manager's Weekly Update, which is a public-facing summary highlighting key projects, departmental activities, and important updates from across the organization. If you're not already receiving this update, which usually rolls out on a Sunday, is available by clicking and subscribing on the e-notify tab on the upper right-hand corner of the town's website. We've also seen a rise in community participation, with more residents applying for board and commission seats, strong interest in the council vacancy following our former Mayor D. Jenkins' appointment to the Yavapai County Board of Supervisors. We've also bolstered our use of social media, sharing timely updates and event information, keeping our residents in the loop and involved in real-time events as they're happening. We're excited to announce that a new town website is coming soon, which is designed to be more user-friendly, informative, and accessible for all. Everything we've done this last year reflects a core belief: that community engagement isn't a task, it's a commitment. It takes consistency, transparency, and a willingness to listen, and we're proud of the progress we've made. We look forward to continuing and working together, because when Camp Verde is informed and engaged, we all thrive. And thank you all for coming tonight, and I think Mayor Moore is ready to wrap this evening up, so thank you all for coming tonight.
Sorry, I think their speeches got in with my speeches, and there we go. All right, well, here we are, the very end of Camp Verde's first-ever State of the Town. You've made it through all the updates, the plans, the charts, the maps, and you're still here, so that's dedication, folks, we appreciate it, thank you. Before we close, I need to give credit where credit is due: to the people who truly make things happen in Camp Verde, and that is our staff. Everything you heard tonight from housing updates, capital improvement projects, water planning, parks and recreation, tourism, community engagement, all of those topics tie directly to our departments and the talented people who run them. That includes the crews maintaining our roads and our parks, the planners and engineers guiding our growth, the clerks keeping our records and meetings in order, the officers protecting our safety, and every other member of our team who quietly keeps the wheels turning. They are the ones turning vision into action, finding solutions when challenges pop up, and making sure that things get done. Not someday, but on schedule. They are answering phone calls from residents, coordinating projects with contractors, keeping the water flowing, managing community programs, and making sure events like this one happen. They're not just doing jobs, they're building the quality of life that we all get to enjoy here in Camp Verde. And at the center of it all, we have our town manager, Miranda Fisher. In just over a year, Miranda has led our team with energy, transparency, and an eye for progress. She's organized, she's responsive, and she's not afraid to dig into details. Honestly, she probably answers more emails before 7:00 a.m. than most people send all week. Miranda, you are appreciated, and the difference you've made in a short time is felt across the entire town. To our staff, from every department, thank you. You are the engine that keeps Camp Verde running, and tonight wouldn't have happened without you. And to all of you here tonight, thank you for caring about your community and for being a part of this conversation, and for supporting the people and the projects that move Camp Verde forward. Our best days are ahead, and they're built on the work we do together, every single one of us. Thank you, and have a good evening. Also, there's still cookies and snacks and sandwiches and stuff in the cafeteria. Please go in, help yourselves, still mingle. Council will be here for a little bit if you have any questions for us or would like to speak with us, and thank you again.
This has been a presentation of the 2025 Camp Verde State of the Town Meeting, live at the Philip England Center. Find more content like this at verdivellytv.com.